Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council regular meeting for April 26, 2023. I look around and I see that everyone is here, so we do have a quorum. We're going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation, if you would like to remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own.
On my text slide, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
The invocation tonight is going to be delivered by Dr. Jim Wallace. Mr. Wallace, please.
Let us pray. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who hast brought us thus far on the way. Thou who hast by Thy might led us into the light, keep us forever in the path, we pray. Lest our feet stray from the places our God, where we met Thee. Lest our hearts, drunk with the wine of the world, we forget Thee. Shadowed beneath Thy hand, may we forever stand, true to our God, true to our native land. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jeff.
And move on to item number five, Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their name before sharing their comments. Our first speaker is Esther Lum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the Oak Haven case, which has been going on for over four years. This is an easement dispute that involves the city, the Aloft Hotel, and Oak Haven Apartments. Last December, City Attorney Farabee said it was wrongly reported that the city had lost the Oak Haven appeal. But here's a question that nobody bothered to ask him. If the city didn't lose this case, why did the city make the argument that the appeals court was "wrong" and then proceed to file petitions with both the appellate court and the Texas Supreme Court? While it's true that the city's and Oak Haven's claims against each other have been resolved, the city continues to involve itself in this case. And my guess is, it's because the city required the hotel to build the drainage line relying on an easement. Now, both the appellate court and the Texas Supreme Court have declined to hear further arguments in this case, and it's now headed back to the trial court. So Legal 360, which is a national legal news website, published this story on April 17th. Headline, "Texas High Court Won't Hear City Utility Easement Dispute." Quote, "The state high court on Friday denied a petition for review filed by Shenandoah, Odom Texas Development LLC, and LNG Builders LLC. The town, the hotel developer, and the construction company previously sought a review after the Texas Court of Appeals ruled in favor of Oak Haven apartment homes. The state appellate court held in November that the plat or blueprint for the underlying land didn't grant the town, hotel, and builder the right to build the drainage pipes on Oak Haven's property," end quote. Now, here's the bottom line. I have stood here and asked for updates on this case, and the response I got was, "The city won't discuss strategy." That's fair enough. But the question is, after telling this council that this case was dismissed on a motion for summary judgment back in December, the city attorney proceeded to file three petitions for additional review, and they've all been denied. And how does that happen in a case that's supposedly over? Shenandoahnews.com will continue to follow the developments in this case and report them to the public because, in the city's own words, "The appellate opinion threatens the ability of cities to regulate, manage, and establish certain public utilities." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lum. Our next speaker is David Teague.
I'm David Teague, 702 Maplewood. First thing, I didn't read a quote. "As soon as we are able, Shenandoah should adopt a charter establishing term limits. Until then, I will impose term limits on myself. There's lots of residents out there with a great idea, and our cities could always use fresh perspectives." Iron Beavers, 2017. That leads to the next information here. The agenda is really packed for a lot of projects to be passed, and I can only imagine why. I know that we were able to at least table $1,725,000 expense from MDD earlier, and I hope they will make the right decision. Also, $135,000 for the, I mean, the David Vetter ACP replacement project. $325,000 for, I lost it on my notes. Well, for services, for basically, I guess, is John Blile needing that money. That's just, it just seems like a lot of projects trying to go through, and I just wish maybe we would slow down a little bit and think about what we're doing, because it seems like these projects aren't hitting budget. And we're just, we didn't, after these projects are done, we got to take care of them. So the money never stops. The only other thing is also, Ms. Lum had quoted the lawsuit with Oak Haven. Whether we win or lose, I know that the lawyer representing the city, I think, spent about $130,000 billed since this case was started four years ago. So whether we win or lose, we still spent some money that we hopefully shouldn't have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teague. All right, we'll move on to item number six, Presentation of the Monthly Capital Project Report.
Okay, well, we just got done with MDD. We did table the 725 K Vision Park, which will cancel out our budget, I mean, our agenda item. And we approved the budget calendar. Okay. Getting into it, significant changes. We did complete the toddler park parking. The wastewater treatment plant design work is 100% done now. The I-45 intersection improvements, the appraisals have been completed for the right-of-way. Underwater and sewer fund, the water well improvements have been completed in March. Under the ARPA projects, our ARPA-funded project to the railroad tracks, we're at about 90% of design at this point. And the other, the larger project, that is going to be in design for about the next year, so there won't be any significant updates on that. I did have a question.
That's the Tamina Sewer and Water Project you're referring to.
Correct, the Tamina Sewer, the 21 million. Yeah, that one, that's going to be in design the remainder of the year. Our section will start doing some build-out. I did have a question from a resident who wanted to know some information on the projects and funding and encumbered funds for projects, because they were seeing information that they thought was misleading. So we went through this in the MDD, what was encumbered, so we really don't have $4.5 million sitting around waiting to find something to do. That's all, that's all been encumbered. And so we truly have, after we do some additional things in the next couple of agenda items, we'll, not agenda items, meetings, we'll probably have about $500,000 in MDD. Likewise, general fund is not $8 million, it is $3.7 million. We have a reserve requirement of about roughly $5.1 million, I want to say. My computer battery went out, so I'm doing this off the top of my head, but I do recollect those figures. Likewise, the water and sewer fund does not have $1.3 million. It has projects allocated, so we have about $500,000 left in that account. That's all I had.
All right, thank you. Item number seven, Discussion Regarding a Draft Budget Calendar.
Mayor and Councils, you'll see in your agenda packet is the draft budget calendar for the '23-'24 fiscal year. The reason it's a draft is because, just like the last year, there's a increased, there's anticipated increase of protests that will be happening with the appraisals districts. They have until the 25th to get that roll. It has to be a certain percentage complete before they can send that over to the tax office that then has to calculate all the rates for all the jurisdictions. So by law, they have until August 7th to get the tax rate. So I'm trying to see, get a gauge on what the protest number looks like before we establish a workshop date, just to make sure that we have enough time to review tax rate as well. So that's why it's a draft, but I just wanted to let you guys see this to give you an idea of what we're looking at for all the other items on the calendar. June 16th, some important dates on this calendar, some are internal for just more city staff. But June 16th, the budget books will be delivered to staff and council and posted online. And then you'll see the June 28th, that is the proposed capital project joint meeting with the MDD board. They are okay with that. They have approved their budget calendar because they are not determinate on tax rates. So that will be the joint meeting, like we did the past couple of years, which has been very good to communicate about projects. Then following that, the June 28th, the July 12th, and the July 26th meeting, we will have operating budget discussions. Just like in years past, I'll give you a comparison sheet that will show you all the changes to each line item. And then if we do get the tax information in time, August 9th would be, we could have an agenda item that says either we're going to go with the NNR, which is the no new revenue rate, or below, or you can vote to then open up the possibility of going above. But that is a record vote that the tax assessor requires, and taxes code obviously requires. But currently, for the proposed budget workshop date, we, staff is, wanted to follow what we did last year and do it on a Wednesday night. It seemed very successful. It gave us staff enough time to get turnaround for the next budget meeting, any additional information that was requested, and to get the budget book updated for the following meeting to show all the changes. So that would possibly be August 16th, because we have a council meeting on the 9th and we have one on the 23rd. So the 16th is kind of the date I'm eyeing right now, but I'll have more information as we see how the tax rolls come in. And also, with conflicting, you know, schedules and staff, that was the, that's one of the dates that all staff was able to commit to, I believe. So, and then if you follow that calendar further, if we do go above the NNR, it would trigger a public hearing that you have to do before you actually vote on the tax rate, and that would have to be at a following meeting. I will remind you, though, the tax assessor does require us to have the tax rate and the budget. You have to approve the budget before you approve the tax rate, to have that all adopted prior to September 15th. That's our cutoff. If we don't meet that date, then we have to collect taxes on behalf of ourselves. And that's, that's a very daunting process. So that's pretty much our deadline to get budget approved. But if there's any questions, it kind of, it's going to follow the same format as the past couple of years. It seems very successful. It seems like we can get a lot done and not be committed to be here all weekend. You know, we work through things every meeting so that we're not trying to scramble and get everything corrected, you know, in a quick manner, so. So this is just a discussion item. If there's any input, please feel free. If there's any suggested dates, please feel free as well.
Just to clarify, are all those meetings going to be normal 7:00 PM time? Are we going to?
So the joint workshop will not be at 7:00 o'clock. MDD has requested possibly doing that at 5:30 on the 28th. So that, because last year, we believe, it was either last year or the year before, we went a little over, and it went into the regularly scheduled council time at 7:00. So they just thought if we started out, at 8:00 earlier, we can get more accomplished as well. And I feel like we're trying to get.
The August budget meetings, other than that one?
Actually, last year, we, I believe we started at 5:30?
I think, I think so.
I think it was 5:30. So we can true that up once we pick a date. But I think the Wednesday was good because it gave staff enough time to get all the information for the following meeting, so.
Now, this is, what is it, the fifth year that we've done this advance?
Stretched out over the summer, yeah.
Yeah, stretched it over the summer. Whereas Mike remembers, we used to do this lousy Big Bang thing over two days on the weekend, where everybody was too tired to ask intelligent questions, and staff didn't have any time to turn around any of the questions that we did have, and we're up against the gun. So really appreciate it that you guys are continuing to do this.
Plus, it really gives a lot of opportunity for residents to have plenty of feedback during this process, because the budget's already posted. We're providing discussions about it, gives them opportunity for questions as well. So it really makes it a more transparent process than we've had in the past, that's for sure. The past being the six years ago, because I remember the first one I sat through was, everybody was trying to catch up with me.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Why wouldn't it just be midnight already?
I think that methodical process also gives people a lot more time to think through and, you know, get feedback.
I, I just want to make one note. I did attend the property tax workshop held by the county and the Appraisals District in the Willis location meeting. The new, the new chief appraiser, Ms. Janet Doyle, she did recommend, and this is for just our residents, to try to file your protest as soon as possible if you do have one. The cutoff is May 15th, but because of the significant increase, they're trying to get people scheduled quicker, to get resolved quicker. So if you have not done yet and you wish to protest, please file online. They've made it very easy online. They've redone their whole process. And if you have any questions, Ms. Doyle is the new chief appraiser down at Montgomery County Appraisal District.
And I was just going to say, I know last year when we did the joint workshop, we ran into a timing issue because we had posted that we were starting this meeting specifically at 7:00 o'clock. Is there a window of time that we can post, or does it have to be definite?
Mr. Farabee can correct me, but we cannot start before 7:00, but we can start after 7:00 in that, using that example.
So then we can post that the meeting would start normally at 7:00, but could start after that?
That was an unexpected thing, but I think we're trying to allow a little bit more time.
Right.
I think about 5:30 is fine. I just, I didn't want to have meetings that people didn't want to start during the day.
Yeah, no problem.
Couldn't get here.
Right.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion.
I'm going to approve the budget workshop. It's just a discussion.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a discussion.
I'll probably bring back the final budget date. If no one has a conflict with that date, probably at the next May meeting. And then, once I talk to Ms. Murray's office and see what, and Mrs. Doyle's office, and see what they're doing with protest and how much they anticipate.
Sadly, there's no reason for me to go to a Packer preseason game this year now that Rogers is gone. So, let's find out how Jordan Love does, so, but I won't be there for that preseason game.
No worries. But I'll bring this probably back to the next agenda once I get clarification from both of those offices.
I have a question. How, historically, how close have we been between the date that we received the, the non-new revenue recommendation and the date that we can make our decisions?
So before last year, they, they were able to quickly turn around the certified role to the tax office, who was quickly able to get us tax information. Last year, because of astronomical increases to appraisals, they saw, I think it was, it almost quadrupled the protest amount, and that could be totally wrong, but it was very significant. And they also had a staff shortage that was going on at that time as well because of COVID. So they were a little delayed. But typically, Murray's office has to get to us by the 7th. But if it comes sooner, we have a little bit more time to digest, and I can do a little bit more analysis on it. But last year, it came in just on time. So unfortunately, it's manpower that has to go through all those protests. The new chief appraiser is trying to do most things through online meetings, so it, it speeds up the process, they can get more done in a day. And she's very positive that this year will go a little bit more smoother. So hopefully, we can get them quicker than later, so. But if not, the August 7th date's the date we're going to get them.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number eight, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve an Interlocal Agreement with Montgomery County and the City of Conroe Regarding Construction Funding for David Memorial Drive.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. No discussion?
Just a quick, I mean.
I can give a quick background on this. As you see in your agenda pack, the interlocal agreement's there for you to read over. But basically, what this is, is an agreement for funding for the David Memorial extension. And this is to extend David Memorial from its current endpoint at Entertainment Boulevard inside the city of Shenandoah city limits up to Highway 242. That little section of road, it's about a mile. A third of it's in the city of Shenandoah, a third of it's unincorporated in Montgomery County, and the remaining third is in the city of Conroe. So this interlocal agreement, those three bodies coming together to fund their portions of the road to get this project completed.
In other words, this is to solidify the agreements that we have agreed upon previously. I mean, we've all met, and we've all discussed this, but this solidifies those agreements.
Right, this is the endpoint of many discussions with the county, with the city of Conroe. Our city will be the, since we're spearheading this project, the funds will be coming to us to finish the project. All parties felt it appropriate to come for our city council first for approval, and then that will be relayed to Commissioner's Court, as well as the city of Conroe council for their approval of the agreement.
So this will truly just solidify the funding as it moves forward, and the city of Shenandoah will be the ones that will be managing the funds and the project all the way through, based on this interlocal agreement.
That's correct.
And this is a great thing. I had the opportunity to, to go to Fire Ops 101 with the Woodlands Fire Department over here at the Emergency Center a week ago, and, and one of the things that they told us was that this project is one that they're really looking forward to, because it's going to really free up the 45-feeder. I was talking to one of the guys from Station 108, which is up by the Walmart store and behind Lowe's there, and he was saying that just to make a run to the north side, because they cover the north side of Shenandoah there by Vision Park, he said just to make that run takes them about an hour. Takes them about 15 to 20 minutes to get there, 15 to 20 minutes on scene, and then another 15, 20 minutes to get back to the station. And he said that they're anticipating that this will free that timeframe up. So I know, you know, this has been a big project for many years, that it's taken to work on it. And I think it's a perfect example of what building relationships outside of our city for the benefit of our city actually does. Because if we didn't have those relationships with the Commissioner's Court and with Conroe and with Matt Gray and prior to that Metz, Commissioner Metz, this project would still be on the books somewhere, trying to find sources to make it happen. So I'm ecstatic about this, and I know the rest of the community is too.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. All right. Item number nine, we agree that we're going to table this because of the MDD decision?
Correct.
To table their funding? Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, so the MDD board discussed this at their meeting and wanted to table it for their, one of their budget workshop meetings next month.
All right, so we'll table this, item number nine. Item 10, Discussion and Possible Action to Award a Contract for the Pinecroft Forest Main Project.
Mayor and council, we, well, you'll see, there's another project here. Staff is able to, to receive bids for this project. Just a quick recap of what this project is. We'll be doing some, some piping improvements at the actual lift station itself, but the main part of this project is going to be installing a new force main, which is a pressurized sewer line to move what's collected in Pinecroft up to our Research Forest Lift Station. If you recall, when we were first discussing this project and designing, council wanted to, the original proposal is to upsize existing four-inch force main up to six, and council said, "Let's look at going up to an eight," which was a great idea. And so that's what this project reflects, is upsizing from a four-inch to an eight-inch. We are, Blile Engineering did call the, the low bidder, and we are going to recommend not only the base bid, but also the alternate items. And those alternate items are upsizing the piping that's at the actual lift station from a six-inch to an eight-inch. This is very similar to what we did at Research Forest. We wanted to get that price to see if it was something that was worth getting, and the price was excellent. So we're recommending this because, again, like at Research Forest, if we upsize that piping at the actual lift station, we're future-proofing that lift station. We don't need to touch it for another 50 years.
Awesome. So what was our budget amount again?
So we budgeted a total of $575,000 for this project.
We did that in the budget, right?
Last year, yes.
What was our, what's going to be our actual cost for that?
And so the, the bid that's being recommended is 400, just over $400,000.
About $175,000 less than budget.
So design did come out of that, which is 40, 30, 40, so over $100,000 under budget.
Awesome.
That's always a good thing to hear.
Also, related to that, we have five bidders, so we know that we, we got really good pricing on this project.
Motion to award the contract?
Second.
We have a motion to award the contract by Councilman Broad, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Item number 11, Discussion and Possible Action to Award Contract for the David Vetter ACP Replacement Project.
So staff received competitive bids on April 19th, the same day we got the previous bids. For this project, on this one, I believe, we received 12, 12 different bids. For this project, on this one, I believe we received 12, 12 different bids. The apparent low bidder, or the recommended low bidder, sorry, I'm going back to the bid day. The recommended low bidder is Faith Utilities LLC and their bid came in at 134,895. That does include a, a $20,000 cash allowance, which hopefully isn't needed, but if it is, it helps keep the project moving along quickly. If you recall, design was funded, only design was funded for this project, so before awarding the project, we will need to fund the project from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund to have those available for the award. So this will be a two-part item.
Yeah, and if I could, I would, for the record, like two, two separate motions. One on the funding and then on an award.
We have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the additional 135,895, 135,000, as Joseph Nashville.
Second.
So a motion to approve the, the Part A, the funding by Councilman Broad, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Discussion?
So we have 12 bidders on this.
Yes.
That's amazing. That makes, makes it a lot more competitive when there's more than one or two bidders, that's for sure.
Right. It helps staff, you know, feel a lot more comfortable with the numbers you get when you can put them against all of the other bidders.
Well, this has a lot for staff, too. Companies are willing to work with our staff and enjoy working with our staff. And when you bring, when you bring 12 of them to the table, that means, you know, we're getting the best value for our residents.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And the Water and Sewer Fund is more than capable of handling this.
Well, we just, we just saved the money.
That too.
We're still that ahead.
Even before that happened.
There's no further discussion on, on Part A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Part A passes. We have a motion for the awarding of the project, Part B.
I'll make a motion to award the project.
Second.
We have a motion to award the project by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, discussion and possible action to approve an agreement with Kite Realty regarding a private well.
I will, I'll keep the background real brief here because I'm sure you'll have some questions. We were supposed to have a representative from, Kite Realty is here, Erica's here. But I'll, I'll give a quick, quick background on this. So in February of this year, city staff discovered that Kite Realty had drilled a new irrigation well, a private well on their property. It's only used for irrigation and it was right next to one of their old existing wells. Well, staff, staff was concerned about this because it's against our ordinances to drill a private well in the city. And so we notified Kite of, of the problem. They pulled in their, their contractor who had done the job and was supposed to get all the permits. They did not. And so staff met with, with all parties to come to an amicable agreement since they had just spent a lot of money on this well, where they could get some use out of the well. But also there would be a penalty for using the, the private well that was drilled illegally. I'll leave it at that, other than to say that this agreement allows for up to 60 months of use of that well. City staff will take readings as if it were one of our meters and they will be charged an assessment of 50% of what it would cost for them to have purchased our water. So that, that will be the penalty portion. Also negotiated a couple of easements that the city has been trying to get. One is for a pathway along, a pathway easement along Alexandra, so that we can connect our two pathway systems, because right now there's no pathway to connect them, what's on David Memorial to the rest of our system, as well as an access easement to connect their property to, and their parking lot to Home Depot, to help alleviate some of the traffic issues we're having in that area. It'll facilitate easier flow between the two properties without people having to get on either David Memorial or the feeder to facilitate that movement.
That's indeed good news.
And we agree to do this as long as our legal team wants the actual agreement to have the site plan showing the easements. And then the second thing we would like is also for the agreement to insert saying that if we were to sell the center, it goes, you know, we will no longer be a part of it, it'll be the new owner.
Yes, and if you look at the next to the last paragraph in the agreement that is in front of you, you'll see that we added that paragraph on behalf of Kite and we are attaching the exhibits as exhibits to show the easements that we're talking about. So yes, we were in agreement with the recommendations of Kite's council.
Okay. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the agreement?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agreement by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion?
No, that'll be a great thing for traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, discussion and possible action to approve Amendment Number One for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project.
I think this is my last one, I'll be quiet after this. So what you have before you is Amendment Number One for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. This is the project that's funded with the six and a half million dollar loan from the Texas Water Development Board that comes from the state revolving Clean Water Act. So when we originally got the, the design pricing from Blile, this was intentionally left out to be done at a later time because it, it helps the design engineers as well as staff narrow what that scope's going to be after the design is completed. If you get these numbers at the very beginning and you don't know exactly where the design is going to go, it could significantly change these. So we wanted to make sure we have the design complete, which it has been completed. And then these, these dollars are, it gives you a tighter scope. These are not unanticipated, this was completely anticipated, these are fees that you're paying anyway. We just wanted to make sure the numbers were good and that's why this is done in this way.
Motion to approve the agreement, or the amendment, excuse me, Number One for the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Second. We have a motion to approve the Amendment Number One for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project by Councilman Broad, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 14, discussion and possible action to adopt the minutes of the April 12th, 2023 regular meeting.
Motion to adopt the minutes of the April 12th, 23 meeting is read.
Motion to adopt by Councilman Broad. You have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fletcher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15, discussion and possible action to ratify the accounts payable for March 2023.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker.
Yep. Second.
Seconded by Councilman Broad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16, civic club updates.
Good evening, mayor and council. So we made it through our crazy March sort of activities. It was a lot of fun. I've talked to most of you since then in regards to the great success between Easter, Trash Bash, all those things. So we look forward to continuing those. So I will update you with some of the upcoming aspects. So the real big thing that's on our calendar coming up is going to be the Independence Day celebration. That's on June the 24th. We always do that a week before July 4th to allow families to make sure that they have the opportunity to attend and it doesn't intermingle with the, the family activities that they might do on the actual holiday weekend. This can be attended at 12 over at the park. Hopefully it's not too hot by that point in time of the day, but I look for continued updates. We've got some great events and activities planned for that thing. Just because we love the pool, even though it's not a civic club item, I will remind everybody that the pool opens for weekends on May the 6th and then it will open daily on May the 31st. So an update on Neighbors Helping Neighbors. So one of the things that, a couple of the requests that I got through March was for folks over in Sunnydale. So one of the things that we're going to do, I did talk about this at the last civic club meeting, we're still working on actually getting a meeting with the, the folks at Sunnydale. We're going to do Okamen as well, but to go over there and essentially introduce that Neighbors Helping Neighbors program to the, the folks that reside there. I know that some of them that know Norma and others personally are already aware of it, but we want to make sure that everybody has that opportunity to leverage folks that are willing to lend that helping hand. And I've already gotten several folks, Steve and some other folks that have volunteered to be a part of that. So, so hopefully we'll have some great progress with that. The other aspect of Neighbors Helping Neighbors, May is going to be my next flag scenario. So I will be putting it out on social media. I'm going to ask Debbie to post as well for the city, that if they do have a Warner Tortor, worn or tattered flag, that they communicate with the city or they communicate with me and I will, I will make sure that that's, gets replaced. As last year, that's just going to be a personal donation from me for those flags. So hopefully we get folks that will take advantage of it. Seen like two on when I walk around the city, but luckily because we replaced a few of them last year, everything's looking pretty good so far. Next item, I know you're coming up into budget season, I saw it on the agenda. One of the things that, I know there's already been some just conversation back and forth, I think people in Shenandoah love the activities that the civic club does. So I would encourage you all as you approach that budgetary timeframe, and of course Debbie will, will be submitting, you know, recommendations from the civic club for budget, but we'd really like to maybe see if we can up that budget for the civic club going into that next year. I know we've already got some port and enthusiasm from some of the council members, so, you know, please, I'd love to see that through so we can make things even bigger and better. I know Mayor Scott, you've expressed that personal, personally to me and I would be happy to, to help champion that for you. And then the last piece is thanks to one of our fantastic residents, Miss Dixie McLeod. She coordinates every year the Shenandoah Scholarship Fund. So we changed things, not changed things, we added some functionality to that this year, so I created some online presence so that we could have students that wanted to submit for our scholarship, be able to present their, their scholarship responses via electronic. The ones that did that did it phenomenally, they actually got it in ahead of time. And so we had several folks that submitted their responses. We will be here on your first council meeting in May to make those awards. We're still finalizing out the actual scholarship awards for that time, but we will be, we'll be here to present it to some very, very worthwhile students. Any questions?
Just a point, if you're going to request budget increases for the civic club, make sure you work with Debbie.
Yes.
Get them to her so she can get them done.
Line item by line item.
And just to clarify, the, the flag replacement is just add a flag, if, if residents have their own personal flags that may be in disrepair or frayed or whatever, we will be replacing those as opposed to the national holiday flags that we, that residents can't subscribe to from Oak Ridge High School.
Yep, absolutely.
That's the difference between the two. We need to make sure that residents know the difference.
Yeah, so we'll be replacement. Just as an added point to that, for anybody that wasn't, didn't listen or didn't, didn't hear the commentary from me last year, we will be doing formal retirements of those flags that we do collect during that, so that's an added aspect to that. So we do that very respectful of the flags that have, have served their, their time in that. I will add, I'm not, if somebody has their own personal flag, not like a giant in the ground flag pole, but if somebody has a flag that they just want to be, have hung up, if they contact me, I'll be happy to do that as well.
That's awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 17, city attorney updates.
None tonight.
None tonight. Item number 18, city administrator updates and monthly reports.
Council, I have a few for you. I think one of the biggest is that on the Tamina project, we're going to start seeing some momentum now. The CCN is now in the process of transferring. It's been a lengthy process. We've had a lot of people working on it, Lisa, Joseph, Blile Engineering, Bill Farabee. So it's been a lengthy process, but that is, is now in motion. We're going to start seeing some activity onsite. We're going to have surveyors and the archaeological assessment starting in about a week. We're working with the city, coordinating with Blile Engineering and with the Tamina community on keeping them informed of activity like this, little surges. But this project is now officially up and running, so that's a great sign. We're, we're looking forward to getting this project done. It's going to take a while though. Secondly, David's Dream Run, that's going to be this Saturday, 7:00 AM over at the stadium. I know the mayor's going to offer some welcome comments. So if anyone else wants to join that event, it's a great event, supports the David Center at the Texas Children's Hospital to keep that, that program going. Election Day, May 6th here at City Hall, it's a polling location on Election Day. Early voting is at the Emergency Training Center on the northbound Service Road, just past 242. We also, regarding the election, we have a special meeting on May 17th to canvas the election results. The past several years, the county, it's taken a while to get those certified reports to us and we have to have those to canvas the votes. Last year, I think the city secretary said we got them at 5:30 the day before the special meeting. So, you know, we do, we do it at the last possible day to make sure we have all those reports and it's no fault of the counties, they have a delay, they have to wait for mail-in ballots and things like that. There's a, a window of time beyond the election that they have to get all those results in. Also, this Sunday at 3:00 PM over at the Tamina Park, there is a Tamina Celebration Day. It's at 3:00 PM and it's just a celebration that they are hosting to discuss their heritage, their history. The author of the, the book and the photographer Marty Korn is going to be there to discuss her book, show some photographs, offer the book for her signature. So it's going to be a great event, there's going to be some, some food trucks and some other activities. So we're really looking forward to this event, this is going to be a great thing. We're enjoying getting to know this community better, joining up our leadership with theirs and getting to know the residents. So we look forward to that event on Sunday. And last but not least, we are, we're arriving in 2023 and we're starting to leverage our multimedia to use other channels to better inform our residents, the public in general. And so we're going to be doing some informative videos and we're taking different topics in bite sizes. And we've got our first one that we'd like to show tonight and it's code enforcement. And it is also going to be up on our website, it's going to be available on our social media and our various outlets, so we'd love, love for you to see it. So we'd love for you to see it.
Most people think the only job of code enforcers is to find every opportunity to issue a citation.
Half inch over. I got you.
But in reality, code enforcers within the city of Shenandoah will do everything in their power to avoid issuing a citation. We understand that life can get busy and sometimes maintaining your property may not be your top priority. That's why we're here to help with a general overview of city codes. Overgrown grass and weeds can pose a safety hazard for pedestrians and drivers alike, particularly when grass grows over the curb. Storing junk or inoperable vehicles on your property can cause an unsafe and unsightly environment. Overgrown vegetation, standing water and yard debris can attract mosquitoes and other pests that carry diseases. That's why our code enforcement officers work hard to ensure our community stays beautiful and safe for everyone. Our process is to identify, educate and improve. It's only when property owners refuse to correct a violation after multiple warnings by mail and in-person visits that a citation is ever issued as a last resort. We're not out to get you, we promise. If we ever reach out to you about a violation and you can't correct it yourself, don't worry. We'll work with you to get your property back into compliance. Contact us today if you need more information about our code enforcement initiatives or if you need assistance in correcting a violation. As the city of Shenandoah, we're committed to building a vibrant and beautiful community for all to enjoy.
Nice.
Awesome.
That is, that is a good video.
I want to thank the Community Development Department, Officer Fran, Officer Duenez. And if anyone's wondering why our real code enforcement officer is not on the video, she had just had surgery and was unavailable. So we had to round up some actors. I want to thank Charlie Ballmer as well because we had some great help and I'm really proud of the result. So we'll be doing more and we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. That's great.
I'm happy that I was able to cut my grass.
Thank you for.
I was getting dirty looks from my neighbors. That's a, that was a great video. I thank all those involved in it. It's a very professionally looking video, very well done.
And our videographer did a great job of making kind of a dry subject fun.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Council Inquiry.
Yeah, I did, I had a question on the financial section, Lisa. On the reserve balance for major funds.
Yes.
We're showing 5.1 million. That is our reserve balance. That's encumbered funds. We cannot use that by ordinance for anything else.
Well, it's by policy. Yes, that was approved, I believe, a couple of years ago to keep 180-day operating reserve balance. And there are certain stipulations within that policy that it can be tapped into, but then there has to be a plan to repay it immediately.
Sure.
And it's just, it's basically to keep the city afloat at 180 days based on the current budget. So each year we go back and we look at what the total operating budget is, how many, you know, the cost per day, and then we calculate that amount and we designate cash from available cash or the budget surplus into that fund.
So for educational purposes, these are called encumbered funds?
Yes, they are committed.
So what you see below that is the general fund available cash. That's $3.7 million. That's what we actually have to spend in addition. Okay. So it's not true that we have $8 million of free cash wandering around waiting for a project?
Yeah, we only have 3.7 that's unallocated at this point.
All right, thank you. And then I did want to point out that we did have a great time at the Emergency Training Center. And if you would have ever told me that I was going to be in a room where the room, the ceiling was 1,000 degrees and head height was 700 and where I was sitting was 300, and I wouldn't even feel it because of the clothing that I was wearing, I wouldn't have believed it. But that was just an awesome experience and I'm really glad that Woodlands invited us out to do that and I encourage everybody to go out and do it again. That's it.
Councilman Fledge?
I know that we're working, currently working on our IDC and I think the plan is try to have that back to sometime in July, August timeframe. If I could request and maybe another councilman would be interested in supporting this as well, prior to that coming out, can we see if planning zoning could submit to us a density requirement prior to that for us to look at and consider that would limit the space as far as how many units can be.
I'd second that.
On a property.
Yes.
So that way we can kind of jump ahead of the waiting on the IDC or anything like that.
Yes.
That would be great. And then also since, you know, we had a citizen's inquiry tonight regarding this alarming Supreme Court decision against the city, would you take a moment and just explain, one, how we even got here, what we're involved in and what's the liability to the city, what's the cost to the city? I know there was a comment that was made that we've compensated you over $130,000 on this case, which I would be very alarmed about, but I'm just curious as to where we actually are and what actually has happened.
Well, where we are, rather than debating, he said, she said, I'll just read you the opinion of the Court of Appeals with regard to the city. And this is, deals with some complicated legal issues and complicating pleading issues. But here's what the court says. "The city filed a response to Oak Haven's motion for summary judgment arguing that Oak Haven had no affirmative cause of action against the city." That's number one. "That any claims potentially asserted by Oak Haven against the city were barred by governmental immunity and that the city owns the easements in question as a matter of law." And then in the holding, when the trial court and the city had filed a motion for summary judgment, which the trial court granted in our favor, part of our argument was Oak Haven has no claims against the city. So the Court of Appeals says, "When the trial court granted the city's motion for summary judgment directed at Oak Haven, Oak Haven had no claims against the city and the city had no claims against Oak Haven. Although at one time Oak Haven and the city had claims against each other, those claims were non-suited before the trial court granted the city's motion for summary judgment directed at Oak Haven. The trial court lacked jurisdiction to grant a summary judgment on the non-suited claims." Okay. We had said from the beginning, Oak Haven, even though they filed a motion for summary judgment against us, you don't have any claims against us and the Court of Appeals agreed. There are things about the judgment against ODM and the judgment against LNG that we disagree with on the Court of Appeals. And because we discussed this in executive session, I cannot discuss this here, but there are reasons why we did not appeal to the Supreme Court. We joined Oak, ODM and LNG's appeal. We simply said, us too. And there are reasons for that. So that's where we are. An accusation that the city lost this appeal is, it's just not true. And so.
The city still has access to the easement. It's our easement, correct?
Yes, yes.
So we've never lost access to the easement?
No, we have the eas, we have our easements today.
What liability does the city have at this point?
None that I know of. Does the opinion in the future, might it cause the city, instead of contracting, telling LNG or an ODM, "Go build this," it might, it will probably require the city to build it and have a contractor pay us.
Pay the city.
Pay the city. Okay. So there are things that we don't like about the appellate opinion, there's no doubt. But it's not an opinion against the city.
It's not like $725,000 lawsuit for not paying the contractor to build the park and that we walked into initially, you don't have that kind of liability exposure.
Correct.
Unfortunately, hopefully the person that was here will watch this tonight and report the accuracy of the liability the city has or how much we've paid you as the city attorney to litigate this matter as well. I saw recently on, you can always tell it's election season because there's all kinds of propaganda that starts flowing through our pages. And so I just need to bring up a statement of fact regarding our employees and their compensation programs. So our employees do not make more, 25% more than the Woodlands. I think it's important when percentages are used that they're actually explained. Because if our staff was making 25% more than the Woodlands, do you not think the Woodland staff would be knocking down our doors to come in? And I can assure you that's not the case because every time we post a position, we have to go to proof. So when percentages like this are used, they take all the employees, including upper level management, and they divide all those employees into the total budget number, which is an unfair representation. When we go through a budget process and considering staffing and considering pay raises, it's not something that we just take lightly and pull a number out of the air. We back everything that we do with research of comparable cities to our size, in the area, out of the area, publicly, privately held companies as well, to come up with competitive pay for our staffing. And I wish our staff, they deserve it, a 25% paid increase above what the Woodlands makes. But I can assure you, if you would go line item by line at them and look at their staffing and look at our staffing, as well as all the other cities that are around us, you're going to find that that pay is very comparable to one another because we all rely on providing those same, that same information, especially when you hold public office, because we're accountable to our residents. So our staff is not receiving 25% more than, than other places. I can say that our staff is, over the last several years, while they may not be at the top of the pay raise, pay rate, they are compensated fairly and in some cases more than fairly for the work that they do. And I think that helps them, you know, not only love what they do, but also where they do it at. And I think that's a big compliment to Kathy and all of our department heads, that we don't have that type of turnover like we did when I was first elected. It was over 21%. Now that number, what do we have, three or five, three to five people that typically transition out a year, Kathy?
That sounds about right, that, you know, roughly per year for different reasons.
So it's not because they don't like where they work, it's family related or, you know, maybe they did find another position. I know we have one that we lost last year that was a customer service representative.
Right, she left for more pay.
Considerable more pay.
Considerably. We've had people, you know, go back to school or move closer to their family or things like that. It's like any kind of turnover, it's different reasons. We've never heard, no one's ever said to us that it's because they didn't like being here.
And I think that's important. That's a very important change in comparison to what it was when, you know, when I first came six years ago. I could tell you that for sure. I think sometimes we just have to remember that, you know, during political times that, or elections, and we have them every year right now, it seems like, that sometimes things are brought out that aren't necessarily 100% truth. Part of it's true. And it really needs to be brought out to where, you know, the facts are known, rather than throwing one of our partners like Blile under the bus thing, just, we're just giving him more money because that's what he's asking for. I think it's important that those things are actually discussed so everybody has a good understanding. One of the things that I've known is that, you know, critics never make a contribution to anything. There's a lot of food for thought, but the problem is they always leave everybody wanting, but never come with a solution or a plan of action to take care of an issue. It's easy to point the finger. It's more difficult to step into the arena and make things happen. I'm proud of where Shenandoah is. Shenandoah truly is stronger than ever. We've grown exceptionally well. We've planned exceptionally well and I look forward to that to continue in the future. So I have.
Councilman Ball?
I also have watched a little social media in the last couple of weeks and I have noticed a marked improvement in the promotion of our city. I'm seeing posts on social media about Shenandoah being a great place to shop, a great place to stay in a reasonably priced motel, a great place to live. It's just a tremendous amount of promotion. I've just been elated. That just really scratches an itch for me that means a lot. I would like to have, I have a question for Kathy. I hope that, I noticed that John and Billy are not here, but what have we been, what are we doing now? How many social channels are we on now and what kind of budget increase are we making with our CBB funds?
We are on six social media channels now. We've added Pennerist and LinkedIn. So we have a total of six, Instagram, Facebook, Twitter. I think I've covered it, but Billy is doing a tremendous job. He's only been here, you know, a month or a month and a half maybe. He brings a lot of social media experience, technical expertise. He's a really good writer. So he just jumped right in and, and just got to work on it. He's working on some analytics on the backend of the website, doing a lot more tracking. I know John's been working on that for a while, but because John was working by himself for so long, you know, he was spread kind of thin. So I know he's really happy to have some help now. And Billy has worked to kind of tie, tie the branding, the look and feel of our website to our social media. And he's going out to visit the businesses and the hotels and he's shooting video, he's taking photos, he's talking to people. He's making posts about promotions like a Mother's Day lunch, what have you, anything that's going on that, you know, that the businesses are offering to help promote them, help, you know, increase awareness of those promotions. So he's really doing a wonderful job. As far as budget, he has been, we've got about $250 a month roughly for boosting those posts. So selectively boosting those. And I know that they are looking at the budget to, you know, to look at more, what else can they do? But, you know, for someone who's so new to the city, he has accomplished a lot already and that has freed John up as a director to focus on other things. So we're really, really happy with the results and we look forward to more.
I think the city of Shenandoah is very happy with the results too. As you know, 72% of our taxes come from businesses. Only 28% come from our homeowners. So the more that we can pump the revenue from our businesses, the lower we will be able to keep our taxes.
Absolutely.
It's vital to the things that we need to do in the city and my hats are off to you and your team. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to add to that too, that the city is very involved also with the Chamber of Commerce, the Woodlands Chamber of Commerce, and also with the Economic Development Partnership.
of Commerce, the Woodlands Chamber of Commerce, and also with the Economic Development Partnership. They are very instrumental in bringing businesses into our into the the community as a whole, and we are part of that process as well. So I want to thank them also for providing a service to the city in that respect and attracting businesses and economic development.
Yes, they are great partners, and we certainly appreciate all the time that you give to represent the city with these groups.
Councilman Brown.
I have one tonight. I'm going to ask the engineering department about this Vision Park detention pond. Possibly, Derek, you could inform me, because I really this term, I've never heard about a wet bottom, whatever that is. What's the advantage of us doing it, and how does it benefit us? So I'm I'm naive in in this subject under.
Sure. So Phase One was actually that was what's currently under construction, and that was creating the wet bottom. So what you have with a detention pond, if it's a dry bottom, it basically means it's it's a dirt bottom where you have to have channels and you have to have slope to be able to drain the bottom of the pond to the outfall so that you don't have a basically a swampy mess. And so with a wet bottom, so we actually at the Vision Park Pond had about a three-foot difference in elevation from the outfall to the the farthest point at the bottom of the pond. By making it a wet bottom, there's two advantages. One is that now that's more volume that you get out of the pond. So by creating a wet bottom without increasing the size and area of the pond, you're creating more volume in the pond, therefore you can mitigate more development, you can lower the water surface elevation to prevent flooding. So there's there's numerous engineering benefits from it. In addition to that, it's an amenity. So that's part of what this process is, is we're trying to basically make a water body that's enjoyable to the community that they can go to. Hopefully, we'll be able to at at some point, we're we're trying to, I mean, put some sidewalks and bridges and things like that, fountains and everything, so that it it looks nice and it's a place where the community can go and enjoy and have a nice walk and enjoy the weather, et cetera, so.
Thank you, Derek, because I just didn't understand.
No problem.
The terms. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilman McLeod.
Yes, I wanted to definitely appreciate the organizers for Tamina Day. I want to do want to mention one more thing on that. The award-winning Oak Ridge High School band is going to be performing their piece Tamina, which was specifically written to celebrate the Tamina community. They performed it at their Chicago, they had a major trip that they were invited on a national level. It's amazing song, it's amazing piece. I actually got to hear it earlier this year, and so I do encourage you to go out and and meet with our neighbors and listen to this Oak Ridge Band and celebrate the community.
Thank you. All right, there is no executive session scheduled for tonight, so we're going to adjourn this council meeting at eight thirteen PM.